Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By roll call, see that all council members are present, with the exception of Council Member Kelly. We'd like to welcome those who are here tonight in person, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56, Cholo City 56, whatever you guys want to call that TV station we have there. But we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet in our town and to be able to voice our opinions and share things. Tonight, we'd like to invite those who'd like to join us in prayer. We'll ask Council Member Hatch if he'd lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Council Member Critten. Would you please stand?
Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we gather for the regular meeting of the Cholo City Council. We ask that we will conduct ourselves in an honorable and forthright manner. We ask a blessing on those members in this community that are suffering the loss of friends, families, and loved ones. We ask a blessing on those that are abroad, serving this country, that they will be delivered safely back to the arms of their waiting families. We thank thee again for the opportunities that we have in this wonderful country and for the privileges that we have that are afforded us. We ask that thy spirit be with us through the night. And we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'd like to begin with a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city, council may do so at this time. See that nobody moved. All close call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight, we have Raylene Richards, the election director, as well as Laura Sanchez, our county recorder, and they're going to explain this little box that we have up here tonight. So Laura, I'll turn the time to you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Laura Sanchez, Navajo County Recorder, and this is Raylene Richards, our elections director over here. She's going to be Urbana White. But I'm coming tonight to let you know of some election year dates and this new equipment that we are going to be using in Navajo County to hopefully make the voting process a lot easier for the voters of Navajo County. There's four major elections this year, statewide elections. We have the Presidential Preference on March 22. That is an election where you do have to belong to the party. So only the Republicans and the Democrat and the Green Parties are participating in that election. So you have to belong to them in order to vote on that election. We have the special election, which is on May 17, and that is in regards to the propositions. It's Proposition 123 and 124, which is in regards to the state land trust fund to get educational funds, and then PSRS. So those will be on the May election ballot. And that's statewide. You don't have to belong to a party. Anybody can participate in that one. We have the primary election, which is on August 30 this year. That is an open primary, so everybody will be able to participate also in that one. And then the general election will be on November 8 this year. Some changes that I have made since I've become the recorder since July of last year are I've created some super precincts, my staff and us, and what that's going to do is that's going to allow voters to be able to go into polling places and get paper ballots if they're not comfortable voting on this new equipment that we have implemented. So for the Cholo, we usually have the city gymnasium and the health department where they can go in to vote. However, if you're doing business in Pine Top that day, you would also be able to go and vote on their machine. However, if you're in Linden, they would actually have a paper ballot that's identical to yours here in Cholo. The only difference that the ballots would have are special districts. Other than that statewide elections, state candidates, counties, they would all be the same on that. And that's what the super precincts are doing. The express vote here, basically, we're going to show you how this works. We do have a presentation. So, does that show up on the TVs?
It should be there on your...
Oh, that's video.
It's video.
Okay. This express vote, basically, when the voters come into the polling place, they are still going to have to prove their identity. So they're still going to have to show their identification in order to vote. So once they have proven their identity and they do decide to vote on this machine here, the poll worker will have a poll clerk that will actually give them a blank piece of paper. They'll be able to go to this machine and insert it. And then this machine is actually going to pull up the ballot types. The express clerk is actually going to select the ballot types because this machine will have all of our ballots on there. So once the express clerk has selected the ballot type for the voter, they will be able to make their selections of the ballot. So the races will be on there. They'll be able to select it. This machine will help us meet all of our ADA requirements, so they'll be able to listen to it in audio. It has color contrast on there for the people who have vision problems. It can change colors. It can be enlarged. They can listen to it in audio, which will help us to be able to do different languages on this machine. So here you can see, we have three languages right now for the Presidential Preference election, which is the English, Spanish, and the Navajo. On this screen here, this is basically where we would walk, the express clerk would walk away and let the voter do all the control here. On the screen here, you'll see a barcode, a QR barcode. That is, we're going to show you a video later on, that's going to give people the option to be able to go online, look at their ballot, make selections, and then come into the polling place and scan that QR barcode. So whether they do it on their phone or print it out on a piece of paper, they could take that into the polling place and this machine will scan it and show them their selections. They could still make any changes they would like to, and then print it out and cast it. But they still have to go to the polling place to cast their vote. Doing it online will not cast their vote. Off to the right-hand side, if the voter is voting there, they would go ahead and basically touch off to the right-hand side. This is just a race that we have. They would just touch the screens, make their selections. Up at the top, it will tell them how many selections they would have, whether one or two. At the end, however, they will get the screen, and this will have all of the races listed here. Basically, you'll see the checkmark right there, and that's letting the voter know that everything's fine with that race. It shows them their selections. And if there was an error, they would get pretty much an exclamation point, just letting the voter know they could go back to this race, correct what needs to be done. If they chose to say, for instance, it's a two, select two race, and they select one, they can leave it with that one and still move on. But it just lets them know that they still have options there. Once they're done overviewing that, they get this little print card. And this, once they've selected this, this is what's going to print that voter selections on that ballot they inserted. It'll come out. That voter still has the option to look at that ballot to make sure everything that they selected was marked. If there's an error still on that ballot, they can go up to that express poll clerk and let them know there's an error, and we will spoil that ballot, and they could get another one. They get up to three ballots by Arizona State law. The third one is their final vote, though. That is what will be cast. Let's see. I think I lost my screen.
So there's a video that we were going to play?
Oh, this is what the ballot will look like after they've selected everything, so that they would be able to check it, just to make sure there's nothing going on. And like I said, they have the languages, and their selections could still be changed. The barcode here, basically, what that just does is that's just letting them know the precinct that the ballot is coming from. Here, we're going to show you a little video, and that is with the QR barcode. So basically, I'll go ahead and play this video, and then you guys could see how they can do it online to make their selections, and then I'll answer any questions if you guys have any for us tonight.
All right, great.
Questions?
Any questions?
The information to go to vote on the sample ballot will be on our website.
We also have you guys on Inside City Hall. We did a segment on here. A lot more questions were put, and you guys had answers and things that way. So that's another source that you can go on to that will be airing this month. But touch base with us on just some of the election dates that we have coming up this year.
Well, we have the Presidential Preference, which is on March 28 this year. We have the special election, which will be on May 17, and that's in regards to the propositions. And then the primary, which will be your state and county seats. And then November, where you'll see the president back on also.
Comments, questions? I just encourage people to get out and vote. It's great. It looks like you've simplified things quite a bit this year. So hopefully, we don't have a power outage or something.
Backup batteries.
Backup battery.
This is not on any power source at all at all. It's got a four-hour battery backup.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
The next item we have tonight is the consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar is consideration of rejecting of the bids for the police vehicle, and then consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting February 16, 2016. We have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Council Member Hatch. Any other questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor. See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is new business, a consideration of an agreement canceling the sale of property. Mr. Brown.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mayor and Council. On March 2 of 2004, the council approved an agreement to sell the real property to the Cholo Fire District. This is where the old library was, in that building there. The agreement was located at 20 North Sixth Street. On September 19, 2014, as we know, the Cholo Fire District consolidated into the Timber Mesa Fire District and became the successor and interest to that agreement. The district no longer requires use of this property for fire district purposes. When we looked at some of the county records, it still showed that the property was in the name of the city of Cholo because the sale was never finalized between the district and the city. The fire district had paid $70,000 towards the purchase. The property did not repay the remaining $70,000. As the fire district no longer requires the property for fire district purposes, the district is willing to cancel the agreement, and any money paid would be considered rent for the use of the building. And as I think it's in your packet, they took it to their board this last week and did approve the cancellation of the agreement. So staff recommends canceling the agreement for sale of property with the fire district. No further compensation, OD their party. As you can see, in the next agenda item, we have worked out and negotiated an agreement with Head Start to relocate their facilities to this location. And myself or Mr. Mueller can answer any questions.
Any questions, Council Member Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have, and maybe it's just, you know, we're just a little overlooked, your red box here on the print that you have doesn't take in all the building. Is that correct or is it not correct?
It may be correct. Council Member Alsop, we're kind of going off of what's on the county map, and sometimes it's not exactly 100% accurate. But in the legal description, it's the, between the fire district, what I want to say, where there...
Firehouse itself?
Firehouse. There's just a small space in between there. That's actually where the property line goes right between there. Then it goes down to the, and as you can see on the back, it actually goes a little farther on the back towards Archibec Park right there, too. But we just kind of go off what the county lines have on their map, and they're not always like 100% accurate.
Any other questions? Council Member Kelly?
Just for clarification, it does not include any part of the park out back.
See no others, I'll call and move for a motion. Council Member Hatch?
I move to approve the agreement canceling sale of property with the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District.
Of a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Kokavas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Next item we have is item 8B, which is consideration of approval of lease agreement with Northern Arizona Council of Governments, NACOG, Head Start Division. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. On June 1, 2003, the city first entered into an agreement with the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, or NACOG, to lease what we call Wing A of the city campus. This included a playground area on the west side of Wing A and a number of parking spaces for the Head Start program. That original lease expired in May of 2005, and we've had ensuing addendums extending the lease to October of 2009. And then a new lease agreement was executed in July of 2009, and those addendums extended the lease through May 31 of this year. Staff has been working with Head Start to relocate that facility to a more suitable location for Head Start. We're proposing that they lease the space, as we know, as the old city library, the property that was just in question. This space has been used as administrative offices for the Cholo Fire Department and then the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. So this previous agenda item, cancel the sale of that property to the fire district, and the Head Start has indicated they're willing to lease and renovate the building for their purposes there. There would be a period of time where Head Start would occupy both spaces until they're able to renovate the building and move their stuff over to the new site. If you have any questions, we're available for any questions.
Look to council for any comments or questions they may have. Council Member Alsop?
I guess the question I have is, I know on that piece of property, there's some advertisement for the fire department and everything else. Who can be liable or responsible for taking that stuff down and getting it out of there for the Head Start then?
I spoke with Assistant Chief Chevalier. He indicated that they know that that's there, and they're working on getting it removed, but it may be a week or two before they can get it out of there. But it will be out of there in time for when Head Start gets located.
Council Member Critten?
Let's see. Did you have another question?
I was going to make a recommendation.
I move to approve the lease agreement with Northern Arizona Council of Governments, NACOG, Head Start Division.
Of a motion? Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Did you have something?
No.
No, he was going to make the motion.
I'm sorry. I thought he had another question.
Let's do that again. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to nothing. Thank you. Next item we have is consideration of endorsement by the city of Cholo for Utility Service Partner Service Line Warranty Program. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Utility Service Partners is offering Cholo city residents a utility service line protection plan for water and sewer service lines. The plan will cover repairs for leaks, breaks, and clogs on the property owner's portion of the service line. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns and the National League of Cities have both chosen to endorse Utility Service Partners because of its outstanding and unique features. It is the only warranty option endorsed by the National League of Cities, multiple state leagues, and over 240 cities nationwide, including 11 Arizona cities and towns. Additionally, Utility Service Partners is a Better Business Bureau accredited business and maintains a customer satisfaction rating exceeding 95%. Utility Service Partners also has more than a decade of experience working with government agencies. Some of the program benefits include no cost to the city of Cholo to participate, optional coverage for all Cholo residents, warranty covers items not covered by most homeowners' insurance policies, affordable rates, repairs made by trusted local companies, and increased citizen peace of mind. Other considerations are, number one, utility service providers pays for the repairs. Number two, all repairs are performed to local standards. Number three, customers are provided with a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline. And number four, utility service providers is responsible for all aspects of the program. Utility service providers will conduct three marketing campaigns each year for three years, which consists of mailing inserts in the utility bills. USP covers the costs of advertising. For coverage and pricing, there are three options, and you can pick or choose all. External sewer line warranty, $7.25 per month, or $82 annually. External water line warranty, $5.25 per month, $58 annually. And in-home plumbing warranty, $6.50 a month, for $73 annually. Any questions for me tonight?
Council Member Critten?
Are these prices total or per something? For each service, that's the total. So if you combined them all, you would have to add up all three of those monthly or annual costs. So if you pay $7.25 a month, you're only going to get the sewer line warranty. If you want the water line and the in-home, you would add all three of those monthly amounts together.
Council Member Kelly?
I tried to read this over. What seems to be missing is any qualification for age of the place, or something like that, you know?
Of the property?
Yeah.
There's no qualifiers. This would be whether your house is...
So you've got a brand-new construction, your fee is exactly the same as somebody with a 60-year-old?
Correct.
Okay. I understand that. I also understood from reading it that it's non-exclusive. In other words, this service, these occurrences are out there today. We're not going to say they're the only one that can do this in the city, right? Said non-exclusive, I believe.
No, there's other, I know we've been, I've seen different programs that are offered. This is just a program that is recognized by the National League of Cities, and we've also looked at other towns and cities that have used this. But by no means are we obligated to just them. But they do want the city to endorse this product in order for them. They will use our city logo when they send out advertising and mailing on it.
That bothered me. How many others have we given the right to use the city logo to? Does anyone know of anything else? They've got a great reputation, so we understand. And I don't know if we've personally had anybody assigned to check this out. But to me, this is a serious endorsement that seems, to my knowledge, to be unprecedented for the city of Cholo. I don't know that we've given anybody else the right, have we?
I don't know that we've been asked by this type of company to endorse anyone else. Even though it uses the city logo, it's not mandatory. It's all voluntary from the citizens. If they don't want to participate, they don't have to participate.
But it also, if I read it right, indicated it would have city staff signature on it as endorsing them. That is a big, big endorsement. Why privilege this one company over any others out there with this endorsement? I can see them asking for it. If I was an insurance company selling life insurance, I would like the city's endorsement and be able to put advertisement in the water bills as they go out. I can see an advantage to the city. How many calls does the city get asking for service, and it turns out to be on the homeowner's side of the meter? And it would be really easy to say, did you subscribe to this insurance? Oh, yes, we'll call this line. And you'll get it taken care of if you're properly insured. And I can see as a convenience for the city, but I don't see that it's any more convenient than endorsing any number of other companies in this business. And I just, I don't know. Doesn't seem to bother anybody else, but it does me. Go ahead.
It's kind of a unique business. Not a lot of insurance companies offer the type of coverage they're offering. And as far as the staff is concerned, I mean, we can see some value for residents to use it. But if the council is not in favor of it, it's not a big deal to us.
Vice Mayor?
So if we don't endorse it, or they give us the, what's going to stop them from sending a private mailing out to our citizens anyway, without our logo? I mean, if they did it on their own, I kind of agree with Gene. It seems like to me that if a company wants to do something like this, I don't know why they would need our approval. They can go to our citizens and do it without our approval, correct?
That's correct.
I think part of it is they offer the discounted rates for the cities that provide the endorsement, which, when you look at those rates, they are a benefit to our citizens if they want to participate.
Council Member Hatch?
Justin, I just want to know, is there a threshold of subscription associated with this, or they're just taking any that will come?
Any that will come, is my understanding.
And then has consideration been given to a package where you would subscribe to all three of those products, if you will, and get a discount on that?
We talked about that briefly, but this was the rates that we were sent.
They market nationwide. And like Justin mentioned, there's 11 cities and towns in Arizona that already subscribe to them. And generally, they told us they generally get around, I believe, 30% participation when they go into a city.
Thank you.
Council Member Kelly?
And we get from them what their independent rates are, and did we check with any of the other competitors to see to it? I mean, it's easy for me to say I'm giving you a great rate, but if no one checks my competition, I don't know. I just, we've dealt with people before that told us things that simply weren't true. I would like to know what their rate is if we don't endorse them, what our competitors' rates, to see to it that, because our endorsement, we know, folks, the city's logo, signature by city staff on a mailing in the water bill is pretty powerful. That's going to influence a lot of people. And they're probably not going to go out and do their own independent research. I didn't do it. I tell you, I didn't take time to try to research it and see if these were competitive rates. But I would like to have this brought back.
I was going to ask, would you be more comfortable bringing it back, or maybe having open it for possibly, if there's other people who would like to... open it for possibly if there's other people who would like to, you know, be considered possibly and then have some presentations from different providers and see what is at stake from everyone available?
We could go that far. And I wouldn't be opposed to going that far. But since they're asking for city endorsement, I would like to see, I don't know, Mr. Mooter, would you be signing that letter that goes in there? Who would be signing it? I don't, it's probably Finance Director, myself, or the mayor would sign it based on council action. It could be the mayor. I guess I would like to see you, the council or mayor, to direct you to assign a staff member, maybe four hours a time, to call competitors, see what their rates are. I'd like to know what these people's rate are if I just call them up tomorrow without the city's endorsement and try to ensure with them, or if they say, "We don't go in cities that aren't endorsed." We can do that. We can research and see if there's other providers out there. And it's, the rate's one component of it, but the reliability of the service is another component of it that we'll research. Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's why... Insurance is perfect until you need it. Right. Well, that's why when, we were first introduced to this two years ago at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, they talked to us at that location. And they talked to us last year and then we've been in contact with them for the last few months, to the point where we brought it before the council. But we're happy to see if there's any other competitors out there. We're not aware there are. We don't know if they'll offer the coverage, if it's not endorsed by the city or if the rate's higher, if they do. We believe they provide a very competitive rate because of the endorsement. But we can check that out. Did they tell us, "You have to endorse us by this date or we don't play ball"? No, they... Good. Because if they did, I'd say, "I don't want to play ball." Frankly, you know, I don't like that game, you know? So I'd just like to check it out. It sounds like a deal if you take it at face value and everything that's been said about it. I sure wish they'd just go without necessarily asking us, because I think we're going to see a stream of suppliers of various services coming to us wanting the city logo. That's what I anticipate. If we do this, I anticipate a stream of marketers saying, "We want your logo."
Councilmember Hatch?
I just have a question about the rates that are quoted here. Do other municipalities pay these same rates?
That's a question I haven't asked.
Okay. I think that would be a good question to ask. I'm not against looking into it from a competitive basis, but when I look at where we are as far as the support of this kind of a warranty, I can see extra costs built into ours because of how people would have to travel in and out of the community or they would have to contract with local firms. But I guess I would like to know if those are the same rates that are being quoted in metropolitan areas. That would be good to know.
We can research that. And we also did, the representative we talked to would probably want to come to the council. She wanted to be here tonight, but she wasn't able to make it. So we could wait until she could come, too, and then she would probably be able to answer some of the questions that I cannot.
Being a subscriber on the end of a low-pressure line, this is pretty attractive to me.
Vice Mayor?
I guess kind of the other thing that concerns me is I, on my homes especially, I use, I know they said they're going to use local contractors and, you know, check them out, but there's kind of certain people that I have work on my home. So I'd like to know if, okay, my certain plumber, is he on that, is there a list or they got one plumber in one area? That's what I mean. I mean, I want to use the people I use or I'm comfortable using. Me personally, if I couldn't use my own people that have worked on my home through that insurance, then it'd be kind of useless to me.
Right.
Just something to think about.
Like, we just pull, I'm just kind of filming consensus here, just rather than table this, but just, we can either pull and bring it back and continuation. We're going to continue the same thing or if we're going to just take it off and have it come back to us at another time and then maybe at the same form or another form.
We can bring it back another time. One thing we did notice looking at the contract right now, the term sheet was valid for 90 days. They adjust their rates periodically. We will tell you that they, some cities charge, they will charge $1.50 more per service. And we could have chose that and then the city gets that money. We told the company that it's, if we do this, we want the benefit to all be to the citizens, not to the city.
Vice Mayor?
If we bring this back or when we bring this back, could you make sure that she's here to answer all these questions? I think that'd be beneficial.
Yep. We can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item we have is summary of current events with the council members on any event they'd like to talk about. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody that Cholo Little League registrations are still going on. This Saturday is going to be tryouts for the minors and the majors and the juniors. If you haven't registered your kid or your daughter for softball, please give Down Hall a call at 928-369-6026 or Joel Reed at 928-369-8967 or just go by Morning Rose over here, just down from the city hall and check in with them and register your kids. We have a lot of kids registered, but we're looking at trying to get some more. So if you have not done it, please go ahead and register your kids for Cholo Little League and softball. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member? Vice Mayor?
Just a reminder, the first weekend in May is our fourth annual Cholo BBQ Throwdown on Friday and Saturday and also our city's anniversary, open to the public. We're going to have barbecue-free games. It's no charge, so bring your families out there. We'll have some live music and kind of spend the day on the senior ball field. Thank you.
Great. I just wonder why we didn't schedule our Martin Luther King Day of Service this last weekend.
Because we've got snow coming next week.
Some of the things we have going on. It's great. Any other, I'll just say we was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting that they had, their business meeting. We had a lot of participation and we acknowledge those cities who were large and small and entrepreneurs of the year awards that they received and for what they do in our community, we appreciate the business support that we have. This time, I'll turn the time to our city manager for his report.
Quite a few things go over tonight, so we'll have a test later. The Forest Service will burn about 40 acres tomorrow at the Polishing Ponds. That's when it's scheduled. That's three miles north of town. So depending on the winds, you could see a plume of smoke in that area. We've seen that before and they're scheduled between 9:00 and 10:30 a.m. If you want to learn more about substance abuse prevention, addiction, or treatment, Navajo County Drug Project is sponsoring a conference this Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Honda Conference Center. The tickets are $55 each and include breakfast and lunch. If you want more information on that, it's 358-1645. We are, work continues on the water line project at the intersection of North 11th and Hunninge, downtown Cholo, close to city hall here. It will be followed by a utility realignment project with the intersection closed for five days next week. The area businesses, the area businesses here will remain open to the public and will be accessible through Ninth Street. So, and we'll also have roadway signs to direct traffic to get to those businesses. Additional pedestrian roadway improvements to that intersection are planned in the near future. The city will be hosting an open house next Thursday, March 10th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. at the city hall for the public to review and comment on the proposed conceptual elevations and site plan for the new public safety building on the Dusa Clubs between Fourth and Fifth Streets. City staff and representatives, architectural and construction firms will be present to answer any questions. Again, that's next Thursday, March 10th, between 5:00 and 7:00. Easter's fast approaching and it's time for our annual underwater egg hunt at the Aquatic Center on Friday, March 18th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is an event for the teens. It's open for ages 11 to 17 at $3 a person. The next day will be our annual Easter scramble for ages 0 to 10 at the senior field at City Park. Registration will be at 9:30 with the Easter scramble beginning at 10 a.m. There also will be a 2K Bunny Dash for all ages with registration at 8 a.m. that day and the run will begin at 8:30 a.m. Also, registration's open for a coed softball league for $350 a team this summer and the teams will begin playing on May 4th. For these events, you can call 532-4140 for more information. And finally, there's, the Parks Recreation Department has tickets available for two events in April. The first is a Neil Diamond tribute concert by Diamond and the Rough on Friday, April 8th at 7:30 p.m. at the Cholo School District Auditorium. The tickets are general admission or $12 each. The second is the annual Cholo Night at Chase Field in Phoenix on Saturday, April 9th, when the Diamondbacks will play the Chicago Cubs. This year, the game will start at 5:10 p.m. with the gates opening at 3:00. The tickets are in the all-you-can-eat section at $45 each. And again, those tickets are available for both of those events at the Recreation Department at city hall. Thank you.
Any other seconds? All right. This time, we'll look for scheduling meetings, any meetings that need to be scheduled at this time. This time, we'll be moving into, need a motion to move into executive session where we will discuss the annual evaluation of the city manager and the minutes of the December 1st meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember Hatch, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time, we adjourn to move into executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.